Pledge allegiance to the flag. All right. So, welcome to our October 27th meeting of the Tiverton School Committee. I'm going to ask for motion to approve the consent agenda.
Make that motion, Sally.
Second.
Do a roll call vote, Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mrs. Pavel?
Yes.
How about yes? And Deb is not yet with us, so motion passes 4-2-0. Next, I have to call up my agenda. Excuse me a minute. We have our our representatives on the line, our senator and representatives around the in the call already.
You want to let them in now, Jerry?
Yes, please.
Well, little background music.
Yeah, yeah, well, did mention the Democrats, which is a good thing, I guess. And I guess I'm allowed to say that because I am an elected official as opposed to an appointed one.
This is all we're still waiting in the waiting room on the my computer. I got it on the phone, but the waiting room's still waiting for me. Up there we go.
All right, so we have did we get Mistress Savany and Mr. Oh, yeah, there's Jim.
I'm here.
Okay. And we have our, how about Dennis? Was he ever able to was he able to make it? Let's see. Well, maybe that's him. Okay. So, anyway, tonight is actually the the last meeting that we'll have, our friend and colleague and I would like to say godmother, Mrs. Black at attending our school committee meeting after I think 16 years of dedicated service on this committee. I know it is not the completion of what has been a lifelong commitment to the children of Tiverton as well as other cities and towns and commitment to the well-being of this town. I know she will continue that and we will continue to see her. But I want to personally thank her for all of her years of service. And we'll do this again, Sally, actually at the swearing in of the new committee in November. So you're not quite off the hook. And maybe we'll even plan a parade. But at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Dr. Sankiony, who I think actually has some things to show us. And then also we have our legislative representation, Mr. Edwards, Mr. Seventy, Mr. De Palma, and Mr. Philag. And I don't know if Dennis is one of these squares that I just don't recognize. Well, he may not have been able to attend. I'm sure he would have liked to. So Dr. Sankiony, I'm going to turn it over to you, I think, first, or if you want to let the
Yep. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And our guest of honor is not on right now. Just sent her a text and I'm getting a call back. Hey, Sally. Want to join by phone?
Maybe tell her to call my cellphone.
I have her on mine, or you want to have her call yours?
Whatever she prefers.
You want to stay with me, Sally? You want to call Jerry?
Yeah, I'll stay on there with you, please.
All right. Can you all hear her? Yep. Great. So Sally's joined us with audio only right now. And we do have a tribute video to start this evening off. So if you all could turn your attention to your screen, we'd like to honor Miss Sally Black.
Hi, Sally. Congratulations and my sincere appreciation to all that you do and have done for the Tiverton Public Schools. Your heart was bigger than all of Tiverton. And you always worked to do what was best for all our students. And for that, I thank you. Congratulations again, and I wish you the best.
Hi, Sally. There's just so much I can say about your support of teachers, students, families, Tiverton community at large, and administrators, especially female administrators. You know, throughout this journey, you've stood by us shoulder to shoulder. And I just can't thank you enough for that. You know, when I think of you, I think that you truly embody the quote, "Those who cannot remember the past are condemned to repeat it." So, thank you for bringing Tiverton's past into our present decision-making. Great leaders don't set out to be great leaders. They set out instead just to make a difference. And you've made an incredible difference in all the lives of our Tiverton families, especially those of our working-class families. Please don't be a stranger to Beckett's School, especially for our annual Memorial Day celebration. Always, Sally.
Hi, Sally. During your tenure as a school committee member, you have been integral to the important advances we have made as a school district, particularly in the areas of special education. Although you certainly have an all-kids agenda, your dedication and advocacy for students with special needs has been admirable. On both the professional and personal level, Sally, I am grateful for your support and your contributions to the Tiverton Public Schools.
Hey, Sally, thank you so much for your 16 years of service to the Tiverton Public Schools. It's always a superintendent's dream to have a committee member who has an education background. And so it's been a pleasure to work with you these last two and a half years, knowing all you knew about teaching and learning and education. It's been a privilege to serve with you, and I wish you nothing but the best as you move forward in life.
Well, you probably cannot hear it, but I'm sure there is thunderous applause among the people of Tiverton or anybody who's watching this at home. And again, thank you, Sally. I sort of first remember seeing her at the Financial Town Meeting back in 2010, when she was really there standing up for the schools. Surprisingly, it was over a budget issue. And it sort of enjoyed both fighting alongside you and working with you these last eight years. I'd like to now recognize our legislative members. Sort of was trying to figure out how I would do this because I wanted to figure out who has the most power or is the best-looking or sort of the nicest Zoom room. And I decided to go alphabetically, which kind of was interesting because it went C, D, E, F. So it was very easy to remember. And then, of course, Mr. Seventy, sorry, you're sort of at the bottom half of the alphabet. I don't think Dennis is here, but again, I'm sure he would be and would share our sentiments. But unless he speaks up, I'm going to recognize Senator De Palma. If you'd like to say a few words.
Thank you, Chair. Much appreciated. And I think I probably fit the best background. It's a Yankee background and the best looking. No, just kidding. All aside. It's good to be here. Sally, I know we can't see you, but hopefully you can hear us. You are a true public servant. One might look at the definition of public service. And I think the superintendent will hold something up in a little bit here. But it's great to be here recognizing the Rhode Island Senate with my colleagues. And in fact, it's being held up right now. You'll see that there's a citation we got for you by myself, Senator Philag and Senator Seventy. But Sally, it's great to know you. I think if anyone's going to be a Tiverton Tiger, you're the Tiverton Tiger. As was said before, while you've been involved in the past, you're involved currently. I don't think you're going away. I'm hopeful we'll continue to see you at the State House for as long as I'm there. I hope to see you there and good fortune. Over to you, Superintendent.
Thank you. I'm going to turn it back to the chair to recognize the next speaker from me.
Sure. Next is Representative Edwards, longstanding representative and civil servant to Tiverton. Whip of the House, I think of him as my personal whip.
So does Sally.
Yeah.
She's the only person I've known who I could be leaving the State House at 1:00 in the morning during during budget season. And she'll call me and say, why did you leave earlier? Still, they're still going through stuff. Sally, I met you some 16 years ago. We were able to have a lot of fun. We started walking the streets of Tiverton. I was always amazed at how many people you knew and how many people knew you. I am never amazed today. And I am honored to call you my friend. And you are a great, great public servant. The town of Tiverton, in all aspects, is going to miss you. We're going to miss your 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 great humor. And to mark how how special you are, we have a House Citation here. Okay. And you'll notice when you see it, it has a great seal in gold, just for you, Sally.
That's wonderful. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you very much, Representative. Senator Philag, you're next. You're muted.
Congratulations, Sally, and congratulations on your 16 years of dedicated service to the school committee in the town of Tiverton. I've had the good fortune of being the state senator for 18 years, so I interfaced with you a number of times over those years. And you definitely have a unique style, Sally, especially when it comes to cheering on the students at the various sporting events that I attended. And it was a pleasure to see the students come up to you and be so appreciative of your involvement in their activities. I believe it meant a lot to them. Also, just last week, I was trying to pick up the slack for you with Jay Edwards going door-to-door. And it mentioned, yep, Sally knew the Pearson at this house. Sally knew the people at this house. And I was hoping that Jay would introduce me so that I could be know those individuals because it's a pleasure to walk in Tiverton and go door-to-door and meet some outstanding people. And so many of them commented on how well and dedicated you were to the town of Tiverton. So congratulations, and I hope you don't go away. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Actually, I'm going to tell you, Fish is timed out, so I gotta go. I'll be right back.
Thank you, Senator. And Jim, pride of place.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Sally, I just want to say thank you and congratulations on your long tenure as an educational leader. I don't know of any more important investment someone can make to their community, to their state, even the country, than making sure our kids get educated properly. Thank you for all you've done. And I'm sure there's great things out there on the road ahead for you. So good luck with all with all of that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Representative. And now I'd like to actually open the floor to our committee members and I recognize Mrs. Pavel first. If you'd like to say something, Mrs. Pavel?
I would. I really, I knew Sally back when my my children were in high school. My first image of Sally was Sally running around the football track with this big stuffed tiger. And I didn't know then who Sally was, and I asked a friend of mine. She's running around the field with a big tiger and a fur tiger coat, Sally, that you had. Well, a few years later, I got to know Sally, and she's been a very good friend. She's been a very important part of the Tiverton School District and the town. Sally, I will miss our late-night, early-morning calls and our Saturday morning escapades to the Rias meetings. We only got lost once, so with me driving you, that was that was pretty good. But I will miss that that fun. And I'm sure that we'll be in touch. So good luck, Sally.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you, Mrs. Pavel. Mrs. Farnworth?
Sally, as the relative newcomer to the committee, I just wanted to tell you how much I've enjoyed serving with you the last four years. You always made our meetings fun. If nothing else, we might have been discussing some very serious topics, and you always found a way to make us smile. I also want to call out in particular, you know, there isn't anyone that's ever been to a Tiverton High School football or basketball game that hasn't heard the band play Eye of the Tiger, just for you, Sally. And I'm sure they will continue to do that every time they see you going forward. I've always looked up to your kindness and calm demeanor and do, you know, do hope to get there someday. And, you know, I just wish you well. And I know for certain, just like with everyone else, that we will see you around town. And I do have one question for Representative Edwards. Any chance you can get gold lights on that bridge?
That's great.
We will try.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Farnworth. Mrs. Palish?
Thanks, Dr. Larkin. Sally, as the oldest next to having served the longest with you, it has been a pleasure. It has just been an honor. You're, you know, you've really, over the years we've been together, led us in a direction that's going to be, you know, an honor and a privilege to continue. I mean, your historical background, I mean, we always can count on you to tell us, you know, and to remind others who forget what happened and why and 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 how hard the school committee has worked over your tenure to be what we are. I've always appreciated your whole child approach. It's something I hope we continue. I think it's it's one of the, you know, the strengths that we have, and it's one of the priorities that you always set for us and that you always reminded us of. I know you're not going anywhere, but it truly, truly has been a privilege and an honor to serve with you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Palish. And now I guess I'm going to turn the floor over to Sally herself. I don't know, Sally, if you wanted to say anything or just sort of sit back on your laurels at this point or
I just I'd just like to thank everyone. I got some beautiful flowers today, which was a lovely surprise from the school department. And all your kind words are so appreciated. And I've loved working all these years with all of you. And we'll continue to do so in one way or the other, probably at the State House, much to their dismay. I'll be coming up to testify. So they can be looking forward to hearing from me. But thank you everyone so much. This was such an honor that you took the time to do this for me. I really, really appreciate it. Thank you.
Okay, well, in closing again, Sally, on behalf of all our teachers, our staff, our administration, our families, our citizens, and most importantly, our children, I want to thank you for everything you've done and everything which I expect I will see you continue to do. Clearly, you're able to be in a lot of different places at once from the video. And so we you know, continuing to hear from you. And by all means, don't burn any of your archives or boxes of paper because we'll I'm sure need them yet again in another budget fight, so.
We'll just call anytime. They're here, ready for you.
And you're not quite off the hook because we've got a meeting and agenda to work through, so.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Okay. So we are then up to item 7B Spotlight on Success Coach of the Year Award. Mr. Ashley?
Yes, hi. Good evening. And I just can't stop by again saying my congratulations to Sally. Thank you for everything. Your heart will miss you. I am here now to speak to another member of our Tiverton community, recognize some wonderful accolades. And so I wanted to speak to a few of the accomplishments of our coach here before turn it over to her, give her opportunity to speak. So I'm here to recognize our field hockey coach, Lauren Tavoris, for her outstanding accomplishment as the Rhode Island Interschoolastic 2019-20 Coach of the Year for the entire state. And some specifics as to why she has much earned and deserving of this accomplishment is that first, she's a graduate of Tiverton High School, has been coaching with us for four years, has 22 wins, nine losses, and only two ties. She won the state championship in 2018. In 2019, lost in a heartbreaker of a game against Pilgrim in a double-overtime shootout. And in her first three years, her team has made the playoffs every year. And right now, the team is first in their division, and so we are expecting another playoff run this year. But obviously, just most importantly, when speaking with Mr. Murray, the athletic director, and students, they just talk about Coach Tavoris's love for the kids. She loves the game, obviously, but she really loves our students. It shows they work incredibly hard for her. And so it's really just an honor to celebrate and acknowledge Coach Tavoris this evening before the school committee. So congratulations, Ms. Tavoris.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Congratulations, Ms. Tavoris. Floor is yours. If you could just sort of let us know what your magic is. Go ahead.
Oh, I don't even know the magics. It changes every day. I'm so thankful for the girls that I have in my program. I wouldn't be here being such a successful coach without their hard work and their desire to learn and just to do well both on and off the field. I was very fortunate to have Chris Messenger as an assistant coach for four years. She really helped me get my my feet on the ground, get my bearing as a coach and just as a mentor for these kids. And I'm also very thankful for Mr. Murray, who has helped guide me along the way as well. I think my my magic is to just teach fundamentals and just make it fun and just remind them that it's not the end of the world if we lose. And we always learn best from our failures and just how can we always progress forward as a team? How can we support each other? And how can we just have fun in the process? Because there's more to life than field hockey. There's more to life than high school. And you always just have to keep looking forward to see the bigger picture.
Okay, well, thank you so much. And thank you for all your dedication and hard work and skill at moving things forward. So congratulations. Well deserved, I'm sure.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. So I am going to next, we are up on item 7B National School Development Council Award. Mr. Ashley?
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I'm going to start that off. This is an annual thing. You may recall, we've done this the last two falls. And I want to introduce the award to the committee and to the community. And then our principal Ashley is going to introduce you to the award winner. So the National School Development Council Award is presented annually to two seniors. This award is given, presented to every high school in New England. And the criteria for the award is twofold. It is top academics and its leadership. And as you've heard me say, it's given throughout New England. Designed to be presented at this time of year to coincide with when our seniors are applying to college. Because it's such a widespread award over the years now, it's recognized by Collins College Admissions Officers and is truly is a mark of distinction. So we certainly hope this award propels these two seniors to the college of their choice. So with that being said, I'm going to call upon Principal Ashley now to tell you about the two award winners.
Yes, thank you, Dr. Sankiony. And I couldn't be happier to recognize our two outstanding students this evening. And so first, it's my delight to award this to Kayden Ibbotson. And so in talking with some of Kayden's teachers and fellow classmates, some of the first terms that stand out is just overall intelligence, good humor, and just conscientious is incredibly hardworking. And Dr. Sankiony talked about leadership, and Kayden really demonstrates this leadership on the field in terms of the many sports, but in particular, excuse me, the baseball and soccer. His peers look to him as a leader. He's calm, he's focused, and they know that Kayden's always going to bring his top 100% and work hard on the betterment of everybody. And they talk about he's organized in that he's not afraid of a challenge. You know, it can be daunting for anybody to face rigorous coursework and the demands of an athletic schedule and that Kayden just takes all this on. And so it was really a delight in talking to his teachers for them to share how he just embraces that. It is incredibly hardworking. So again, our sincere congratulations to Kayden and his family on this. So congratulations, Kayden.
Thank you.
Congratulations, Kayden.
Thank you.
Want to say a few words or just bask in the glory?
No, I mean, it all comes from my parents. I, I, I all, I get it.
Oh, he, good boy. It all comes from my parents.
That's the right answer. Go ahead, Kayden.
But yeah, I just, I get it all from my parents. I, my personality is just taken right from them. And I wouldn't be in the same position I am today without them. So I would like to thank them mostly for that.
That's wonderful.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay, Mr. Ashley?
Yes, thank you. And so again, much delight to recognize our second senior, Angelin Santir. And so again, just speaking to Angelin's classmates and her teachers, they were just, you could see their faces light up right as soon as I mentioned her name. Again, we talk about leadership. What the teacher spoke about with Angelin is just in the classroom, how she's that natural leader, but kind of quiet and reserved at first. So she might not be the first to speak, but that when she does speak, people listen, her peers respect her, she's thoughtful in her approach, she's really paying attention. And that other students will see that and go to her just for questions or just, just kind of talk to her. And that, again, as with Kayden, students are not, Angelin was not afraid to take on challenges, that she embraces them and approached a rigorous coursework. You know, and that, as with Kayden, they talked about her focus and her determination, both in the classroom and on the field. In this case, for Angelin, it was field hockey. I know Coach Tavoris would know her very well and speak to these attributes of her. And that she's really just a wonderful student to have in the classroom, as with Kayden, that they know that when Angelin's there, there's gonna be a positivity and warmth around her that it's just gonna make the class that much better. And so it was really our delight and our congratulations again to Angelin and her family for this. Apologies, the lights just went off on me here, okay? And so congratulations, Angelin.
Thank you.
Good job, Angelin. Congratulations. I'd like to thank your parents as well. That was a good opportunity to do that.
I really just work hard and I get motivated because I recognize that the privileges and the opportunities that I have, that both my parents didn't have when they were in high school. And I use that as my motivating factor in working hard and helping out others too.
Yeah, well said. Congratulations and well done. Thank you. Good job. Okay. We are now up to...
I have to say, these celebrations just aren't the same when we're not in person.
No, I know. Yeah. I'm trying to make it smooth, Mrs. Palish.
No, you're doing a great job and they're wonderful, but there's nothing like being able to clap together and someday.
Yep. All right, we are up to item 7C COVID Capital Funds. Mrs. Roderick?
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. The, the school...
Kind of bad echo.
My sound is on. You folks can hear me, correct?
Yep.
Bear with me.
I think you're good now, sound wise.
Okay, everyone can hear me, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes.
So the School Building Authority has created a COVID-19 Capital Projects Fund. A total across the state is $4 million and Tiverton has been allotted $22,782, which I guess we could call a micro capital project. Dr. Senkione and I are still working out the details of what we'd like to do with that money, but there's a very tight timeline and the MOA needs to be signed by all members of the school committee and returned to the SBA by November 12th. And so I wanted to make sure we had ample time to present it to you and then get the signatures. The dollar amounts that they have right now are quote unquote draft, but they really aren't expected to change and that the, they will be voting, the Board of Regents, I think it's called, for the School Building Authority will be voting officially on it on November 4th. And then, you know, just about a week later, we need to return the documents. I'm not quite sure why it's so formal in the procedures, but apparently there are some districts that may not accept the funds. And I'm not sure why that would be the case, but, so I'm, I know you folks hopefully have had time to review the documents that were in the packet and I am recommending that the school committee accept the $22,782 towards to be determined capital projects in FY21.
For discussion, I'm gonna make a motion to accept.
Is there a second? Okay. So I'm gonna open up to questions to the committee. Mrs. Farnworth?
Do they specify the, well, I read it in the memo now that, I have to assume you've already spent more than the amount of these funds on COVID-type expenses. Is that correct? Would that be correct?
Well, these must be capital in nature and they must be COVID-related. So like I said, Dr. Senkione and I are still in the process of determining how these will be spent, if prospectively, or if whether we can apply it to something that we've already spent it on. But the two stipulations, the main stipulations are they must be COVID-related and they must be of a capital nature. So we need to, we need to sort of comb through our expenses and see whether retroactive approach or prospective approach would be better.
Okay, thank you.
Anthony, yes, Diane?
No.
Okay. Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Yes, go ahead. Yep. Peter, you may want to move her closer to your microphone.
Can you folks hear her?
I certainly can. Can any other?
I can hear her.
Can you folks hear her? They're asking you to speak again, Sally, please.
Okay, I vote yes on this.
Oh, she votes yes on this.
Yes, on the fun.
And yes, we can hear her now.
All right. We're actually just at the point of discussion, Sally, so if you have any questions?
Oh, okay, so I get someone make a motion. No, no, I think it's good and thank you, Amy, for keeping on top of this because I know the timeline is very tight.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Palish?
Nope, I'm all set.
And Ms. Pavo?
I'm set, Dr. Larkin.
Okay, I just have one, Amy. How did we come up so short? It's, I know it's $4 million for the entire state, it's not a huge amount of money. Providence wags the dog and, again, Central Falls and Pawtucket waved the cat, wagged the cat.
So we came up...
But even that...
This amount, I'll just, I won't add any adjectives to that, this amount. It's actually based on the COVID case experience. So the, you know, the more cases you had in the community as of a certain date, and I don't know what that date is, they allocated more dollars, in particular in the schools that, you know, the larger populations would need more funds, whether it's HEPA filters, shield, HVAC, that sort of thing. So the fact that Tiverton is doing a relatively good job and in particular, the school district is doing a very good job at managing the COVID cases effectively came to bite us in the pocketbook.
Okay. That certainly explains it.
I do have one more question.
Yep, go ahead.
Amy, you mentioned that you'd need us all to sign. Do you want us all to stop by your office?
I actually think we're gonna have someone come around to you to make it easier for you folks.
They're not allowing digital signatures?
The, the form is not like in a digital signature format, Deb.
So it's, it's not, you can't scan it into Adobe?
I can scan it. I guess they didn't specify, to be honest, one way or the other.
So we should be sure. No, you're right then, we should be sure. Okay.
I, to be honest, I would prefer original signatures only as, you know, being an accountant in a matter of course. I'm just leery, I don't want to give anyone any excuse to take the money back.
No, good point.
Okay. If other districts decline the funds and they want to give them to us, we'll be happy to have another meeting to accept it.
That's right. We'll do that right away.
And that's exactly what they said. If there is a district that says, I don't need the money, and I can't imagine that there would be, but you never know, that they would then redistribute whatever amount that was. So we're hoping some of the bigger schools say, no, we don't need this money, we can get another big chunk of change, but we'll see if that happens.
Yeah, I'm not holding my breath, but if it shouldn't. All right, if there's any, no, any, there is not any further discussion, I'm gonna call for a vote. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Black, now you say yes?
Yes, yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Ms. Palish?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Amy, thank you, Peter.
You're welcome.
Lost my agenda. All right. We are up to item, item something. 47. D Administrative Goals, Dr. Senkione?
Great, so as you saw two weeks ago, we had our principals present to you our school improvement plans and it was an ideal opportunity to show you how we're aligning the district with our district goals, our school improvement plan goals and our teacher goals. And now you're gonna see our cadre of administrators express their goals and also connect to the district goals and all the work we're doing here. So you can see the list of people we have here that are gonna present to you tonight. A lot of great work taking place here by some very talented people. So to start us off, we have our Director of Special Education, Ms. Sarah Cragger.
Thank you, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin. Thank you, Dr. Senkione. Just gonna share my screen. I know Dr. Senkione provided you with some of the goals or two of the goals that I'm gonna present this evening to you. And before I present those goals, I just want to quickly and briefly just go over the Special Education Department in Tiverton. As you know, we are here to provide special education services for students with special needs, ages three to 22. And ultimately, we want to improve their successes in school. We want to improve their academic successes, their social successes, social emotional successes, and we want to do that ultimately so they are successful after they leave Tiverton High School. Special education is specially designed instruction that we develop together with an IEP team to meet the needs of the students. Most of that, the special education falls under IDEA. And you've heard me say this before, but the two major things under IDEA are Free Appropriate Public Education, FAP, and Least Restrictive Environment, the LRE. So our IEPs are really based around those two factors. As of June of 2020, we are servicing approximately 312 students, ages three to 22, who live in Tiverton. There are 14 different disability categories that students can become eligible under. They have to have a disability and require specialized instruction. And again, we do this up until a student graduates, no longer meets criteria, or turns the age of 22. So like, like Dr. Senkione said, I did, together with the admin team and himself, we developed the Tiverton District Goals. So the first one is about instruction and I looked, just looked at that a little bit deeper and how that aligns with students with special education needs. So we really wanted to look at our distance and hybrid learning. We've learned a lot from March to June on how to service kids best and a little bit of trial and error, but I think we've really come up with some best practices and we're continuing to learn about those. But we want to make sure that's happening and we want to make sure it's happening consistently at all levels and at every school. So we established some expectations for that. We reviewed those with the special education teachers and speech pathologist, school psychologist, everyone involved in a student's IEP. So we set expectations and not only set expectations, but placed some monitoring, progress monitoring in there as well, so we can continue to evaluate what we're doing with our students. Each, every other week, myself and my assistant director are in the schools or holding virtual meetings with our special education staff. And it gives us a time to really just meet with them, talk about some job embedded professional development activities, and then brainstorm other professional development activities to support this goal. We want to continue to collaborate with parents and regular education staff, especially for distance learning. There was a little bit of a disconnect from March to June on that. So we want, we put in some protocols and procedures to ensure that we're connecting parents and regular education staff to the specialized instruction that's happening in distance learning. One of the ways we did that, I'll show you here. So we're hosting all of our IEP meetings, eligibility meetings, and evaluation team meetings virtually. So here's an example of something we put together for our special educators to provide to our parents prior to an IEP meeting. Parents will get some information and will review this agenda as we go through the IEP meeting, ensuring that we're including parents' concerns and celebrations, review of a previous IEP as an individual education plan, prior written notice gives notice to families about what decisions the team is making. And at the end of the meeting, we're asking parents to do a survey. So we can ensure what we're doing is providing parents with the information that they need and sometimes that's difficult to do virtually. So if I go to this survey link, I can just show you that, what parents are given at the end of each IEP meeting. In regards to, you know, giving parents enough notification to attend the meeting, making sure they're provided the link and the purpose of the meeting and who's going to be in the meeting and what those roles are. We've asked the teachers just to send a draft IEP to families so they're aware of what we will be reviewing. And we want to do things in a timely manner too, because we know that some families have difficulty even, you know, with the data plan and making sure that they're online. So we want to be swift in our meetings, but we want to make sure we're giving them enough information. So you can just see here, some of the questions our families will be asking.
Ms. Cragger, can I just interrupt for a moment? Because my screen is still just showing the slide that says goals for 2021.
Oh, is, is everybody showing that or can you see the survey?
Uh, no.
No, we just see that.
I'm sorry. So you know what I'll do is I'll share the survey link with you guys. I'm sorry, that's not coming up.
That's fine.
I can see it on my screen. Share it with you and I am kind of explaining exactly what the survey says. And then we do ask parents at the end of the survey to give us just some information that we didn't get to on the survey. Again, it's really just trying to get our parents, you know, to, we want to ensure that they're part of that virtual IEP process. But like I said, I will get that to you so you can see that. Um, but like I said, I will get that to you, so you can see that. Um, and then secondly. Um, we looked at the district goal of providing high-quality systematic professional development to increase student achievement. So, you know, a couple of years ago, or last year, Tiverton adopted the Witten Wisdom, which is a rigorous. And multifaceted literacy approach. We want to make sure our students that are coming into kindergarten are ready for that. So we are training our preschool teachers and our speech and language pathologists in a research-based clinically proven literacy. Program called Lively Letters. Um, so we want to provide training on that, make sure they have the materials and resources. Um, we want to make sure we have a team together that has ongoing communication about the implementation of lively letters. And then evaluate the learning outcomes. Um, we are hoping those learner outcomes are successful, and our next stage would be to. Provide professional development to our kindergarten teachers and first grade teachers, because it is something that they can continue to use. As a specialized or supplemental approach to the Witten Wisdom. Um, on the paperwork that Dr. Sankeyoni gave you, after the strategic actions are performance indicators. So I will be completing the performance indicators as we go through the school year. And that is it.
Open up, I'm gonna open up the Florida questions. Um, Mrs. Pavo?
Sarah, how many times a year do you, do you meet with parents or the teachers and the parents to review their IEPs?
Elaine, we meet at least annually. By law, we have to do that. Parents receive progress notes every quarter on the IEP goals. If we need to meet to review or amend an IEP in between the year, we do that if the parent or teacher or one of the team members requests that review.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Anything else, Elaine?
No, that, that's all.
Okay, Mrs. Palish?
No, I'm, I'm all set. No questions, but Sarah, I, I really, really appreciate the focus on the parents. And, and, and being able to make them, um, you know, as much of a partner as you possibly can. Um, you know, getting them things ahead of time and, and all of that is just gonna be. You know, very, very helpful in that, and I, I really appreciate that as a goal. So thank you.
Thank you. We agree that partnership is very important. And again, in that virtual meeting style, you kind of. There's a way that that can not, you know, not be as present. So we want to make sure that we have that partnership there. Thank you.
Mrs. Black? Peter, she's still on with you?
Can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay, um, Sarah, could you just tell me a little bit more about the lively letters? Does that, is that gonna supplement and, and is it gonna go along with the Witten Wisdom, strengthen it?
Exactly. It'll supplement that. It really brings, we may not realize that letters and letter sounds are actually very abstract. To new learners. So it really brings the learning of letter names and letter sounds to a semi-concrete and concrete method. So students who have a little bit more difficulty can grasp that information a little bit easier. And then hold that information when they learn that.
And bring that along to, yeah, that's good. That's like the squalding, writing, rote, reading, more concrete, you know? Yes, that's good. I'm glad you're doing that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Barnworth?
Um, Sarah, you will be sending us the slide presentation?
I will, yes. I'll send that to, I sent the slide presentation to Dr. Sankeyoni. Um, but I'll send along this, that, as well as the survey that I was reviewing too.
Thank you. Appreciate that. For the virtual IEP meetings, have you run into any difficulties thus far with families? Not being able to well participate in that format?
Yeah, actually, it's increased our participation in IEP meetings. Uh, we have a lot of families who are unable to come to meetings because they're either working or can't leave their younger children. And we've actually seen an increase in IEP meetings, Diane, giving them this option. Um, and if they can't get on a Zoom or a Google Meet, we do have them on the phone as well. So we haven't run into many of those problems. In fact, just if, um, you know, just the opposite.
Okay, great. That sounds good. No, I think once I take a look at the, um. The survey, I may have more questions for you, Sarah, but I will certainly feel free to send you an email. Additional questions?
Yeah, please do.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thanks, Sarah. Peter, I don't know if we, are we monitoring public questions? I don't, I don't see Julie here. Dave, you are?
Yes, there are.
Any question? No questions right now? Okay. Any questions from any of our administrators? Okay, thank you, Sarah.
Thank you.
Uh, Peter, who's up next?
Yeah, we have Ms. Rodrick coming up next.
Thank you, Dr. Larkin and Dr. Sankeyoni. Let's share my screen here. Okay, this is just a very short cover page. I'll get right to it. My presentation is nowhere near as exciting as Sarah's. But, um. Bear with me one second, please. All right, can everyone see this? Here, you know, it's, it, it was my bad. Okay, um, so, um. So I have three goals for the year. The first is to obviously develop FY twenty-two budget. Uh, given the current constraints, I'll be working with the principals, the superintendent. Uh, and members of the community to hopefully align the district goals with the financial resources that we need to achieve those goals. Um, and once the school committee approves that, hopefully I will assist Dr. Sankeyoni and other members of the administration. Uh, in advocating for the budget that we need to provide an act, you know, uh, an exceptional educational experience for the students of Tiverton. And my goal is to have the first draft of the FY twenty-two budget to the school committee by December eighth. And as early as net, we, next week, we'll be sending out to the administrators all of the, uh, forms. And in, collect information in order to start doing, start that process. Uh, the second goal is, uh, in, in, where, is to implement our new accounting software, which is E-Finance Plus. Uh, we are sort of in that process right now where we are developing the chart of accounts and refining that. Uh, so that it not only translates from our legacy system, but also fits into the, um. The configuration of E-Finance Plus, but also has all the reporting capabilities that we need for RIDE. And, um, you know, the financial statements and so forth. Um, so the central office, which is me and my staff, will be going live, I guess you can call it a soft go-live, December first. Uh, so that we become most familiar and become the super users of the system. And we will be running parallel with the legacy system through June, with an ultimate switch over as July first. However, um, part of this project is not only the financial piece of it, but also the purchasing piece. We are going to, um, get away from paper and have requisitions and POs generated in the system. And have that approval workflow flow to the principals and then myself and potentially Dr. Sankeyoni. Uh, if appropriate, all through the system generated by emails, so that at any given time, we can see where it is in the process. And there really isn't, um, any need to be shuffling papers from building to building. In addition, we're hoping that this, um. Reduces, I won't say eliminate, but reduces sort of after the fact purchase orders. Sometimes that can't be helped. But hopefully people will get into the process of, uh, the practice and process of submitting purchase orders before the transaction is made. And, um, you know, the, given, uh, the electronic manner of it, it can be approved. And go through the process in minutes versus hours or even days. Um, and my final goal is to define and document the roles and responsibilities of the central office. Uh, so right now, there, um, we don't have a lot of cross-training. We have some redundancies. And in terms of, um, we are gonna be redoing, uh, some of our business processes to align with the accounting software. This is a good time to realign, um, not everyone's job description. But, um, to just clarify and also find out what resources they need to, um. To do their job more effectively. And I can say that my entire staff, um. All of them are very, very eager to learn, to do better, to do more, to do things more efficiently. And I want to give them that professional growth and development to do that. Uh, they, I have to say, in my almost year here. Uh, this is a little bit of an aside, uh, my entire staff, Carolyn, Dottie, and Christine. Um, they have been super supportive, super willing to work hard, and they're actually excited by the new system. And I want to make sure that we can, um, give them the opportunity to increase their skills through this process. It's kind of almost a symbiotic time between a new accounting system where we're making a change. It doesn't make sense to retrofit a new system to the old way of doing things. So, um, and our goal is to have all of that completed, uh, by the time we fully go live, uh, on July first. So with that, I will leave, leave it open for questions.
Okay, thank you very much, Ms. Rodrick. And I will start by saying I really appreciate, um. Your third goal and, and your focus on your staff, who is, I, I agree with you. A really superb group of people, working very hard.
They are. I couldn't do what I do without them legitimately.
Okay, thank you. Um, so I'm gonna open it up to the rest of the committee, uh, Mrs. Palish?
Nope, I'm all set. Those look great.
Um, Mrs. Black?
It'll be exciting for sure.
Okay, uh, Mrs. Pavo?
One question. How it's, how much does this, um, the accounting software cost?
Uh, if I, if memory serves me, so this was acquired before I got here, uh, but my understanding is that, um, it was. Correct me if I'm wrong, gave it about forty thousand dollars.
Okay.
And that includes all the licenses and the support, and actually quite a bit of training that comes along with that. As, as well as, uh, some manuals that they're preparing on our behalf for the end users in, on the purchasing side.
Great, great. That's, that answers my question. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Um, Mrs. Barnworth?
Uh, just, well, first of all, I want to echo Dr. Larkin's sentiments with regard to, um, the central office staff. They, they are a great group, and I'm, I'm glad to see them getting that opportunity for some professional growth as well. Thank you for that. Um, with regard to E-Finance Plus, you, you described the purchasing. Capabilities. Um, does that flow through to the accounts payable side of the transaction?
Absolutely. Yes, it does.
Okay, good. And lastly.
I'm sorry, and then through to the general ledger.
Perfect.
Will eliminate, uh, you know, uh, it flows through to accounts payable, you know, there'll be the matching with the invoices. And then once all of those are entered, it's a seamless, um, if you will call it interface with the general ledger as well.
That's good. Thank you. Um, my last question is regarding storage, uh, information storage. Is it cloud-based? Do, do we have a server for this? What's the?
It's cloud-based. It's, it's web-based, actually, cloud-based.
Okay. And, um, is there an annual license?
I believe there is. I just don't have the figure off the top of my head, Diane. I can get that for you.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have. Thank you, Amy.
Jerry, I actually have a follow-up.
Yep.
Just 'cause I heard, so, so Amy, you didn't purchase this? Are you comfortable with it?
I, I am, I, I am. I mean, I. Having used more sophisticated systems, I think I might have chosen something different, but this is certainly workable. I'm actually working, uh, with, um, the business manager in, um, Situate, Rhode Island. Who also went from Phoenix to E-Finance Plus. So he, other than, you know, some of the configuration of the account numbers. Because the Yukoa chart string is twenty-four digits and some of the base limitations, uh, the character limitations. In E-Finance Plus are a little shorter. We kind of have to come up with, uh, sort of an intuitive numbering system. And then there's a behind-the-scenes crosswalk. If it were up to me, I think I would have picked something else that would have been able to handle our entire chart string. But, um, you know, I also, um, you know, it's, it's really not prudent at this point. To seek out a new system and to spend, you know, take that forty thousand dollars and just not use it.
Okay, okay. Thanks. Honest answer. Good. Appreciate that.
Is there, is it the same system as the town is using, or is the town using something else? And do they articulate well enough with each other?
Uh, the town is using something else. Unfortunately, I don't know what that is, and our systems do not talk to each other. So.
Or do they need to?
Yeah, because they don't like each other, because they just don't, they can't.
They don't need to.
For the most part, uh, they don't need to. The number of transactions that we have that are, um. That, you know, interface with one another is so small, unless we somehow got a really effective. Powerful package for a really good price on both the school and the, um, the town. Um, you know, I'm not sure that there's anything, you know, having two systems really isn't an impediment to our ability to do our work. Both individually and collaboratively.
Okay. And, um, this is gonna maybe sound like I know more about what I'm talking about than I do. But with regard to record-keeping and backup, do we have an air gap between sort of the software? Or does that, is that served by the cloud or the web-based storage if we were to be hacked and held ransom?
Uh, so I'm gonna let the technology director answer that. He wants to, he wants to speak to that.
So the benefit, uh.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The benefit, Dr. Larkin, uh, for us using the E-Finance Plus and having it cloud-hosted. Is that if one of our devices was ransomed, it doesn't attack, uh, the online cloud software. Uh, so with the current program that we have, that absolutely could happen. Um, but with the newer version, since they are in a different kind of a facility. And that the way that the, um, the ransomware detection is set up at their server, it's a lot, a lot more difficult for something like that to happen.
Okay. Okay. So we, so we essentially have a cloud or a web-based backup if, if something were to happen?
Correct.
In six months, not yet.
Correct.
All right. Although I guess if he's doing it in parallel, starting.
December first.
November first, we will by then. Okay. So we have thirty-something days. Okay, all right, great. Uh, thank you. Back to you, Peter. Like, uh, broadcast.
All right, thank you. Mr. Chairman, and we are gonna bring up our tech directive, Kamali. This will be flawless.
I didn't ask if there are any questions with, uh, Ms. Rodrick's presentation. I'm.
Not, not yet, not that I'm seeing.
Okay.
All right, so it's my turn, everybody. Okay. Low pressure, right? Low pressure, right? That's right, yeah. Okay. I think you're still on.
My speakers are not on.
I'm just going to find out if the mic is live. All right. Okay, so let's get here. Just give me one second. Will you on? Yeah. All right. There we go. All righty. All right. So what we're going to do today is just go over the 2020, 2021 technology department goals as well as personal goals that, that we have set place for myself. So as a department, our motto for this year is what can we do better? So what we're trying to do here is continue to run flawless technology for the district. We want to do any kinds of updates off hours to prevent classroom interruption. We want to modify and maintain all of our security protocols and ensure that every family has a working Chromebook and internet access. So with the current situation, ever since back in March, one of our big concerns was to make sure that every student goes home with a device if they don't have something provided for them, as well as provide internet for them. So far, we've been very successful with that. And we want to continue to run that as long as we possibly can. As a department, we all want to become level one Google certified. So that is something as a group, the four of us will be completing this year, just to add something to our knowledge base. We want to offer our staff professional development. One of the goals for the department is for us to have at least 100 teachers join one of the technology sessions that we run. So we want to provide that for them as well. And another thing that we really want to strive for is the technology department is really a customer support department. So we want to provide that superior customer support to not only our staff, but the student families as well. The, the better we are with helping the families and the staff out, the more successful these kids will be able to be. And our goal is to help the teachers get those kids to cross the stage. So what we did is we did open up two separate rooms. One is a Google meet room for our staff. And one is a Zoom room for our families. And we promote that out so that if a family is having an issue during distance learning, they can jump into a room. And one of our staff members can help them out. And the same thing with our, our teachers as well, as if they're in the middle of a class and something goes wrong. It's an easy, quick, they click on a button, they jump into our Google Meet, and we can help them out on the fly. So when we go into the goals that I've set place for myself, we started this off over the, over the summer, reviewing the technology-related policies and get them updated to the 21st century. As you guys are aware, we did work with the ACLU recently to kind of go over some of our policies and discuss those a little bit further. So many of our district-related policies related to technology are a little outdated. As well as some of them may be out of compliance. So we'd like to review anything that, that a touch touches the technology side and get them adjusted to fit in the proper needs for all of our staff and our students. We want to get some of the policies as well as internet policies to the committee so that they can be reviewed and get them straightened out as fast as possible. We are working with other districts and agencies to work the policies to fit the ever-growing technology needs for schools. So we are working with other districts and seeing what they're offering and what their policies look like, as well as talking to different agencies in the government to see what they're doing as well. We would like to get these updates onto the policies during this 2021 school year. Another goal that we have is to apply for technology-based grants to help ease some of the increasing costs for our department. So with the ongoing crisis the country is facing, the technology button has been a major concern. So what's happening is the prices of anything that we want for technologies going up. As we're all aware, with the budget crisis in town, the cash flow is very low, so we don't have the abilities to buy all the, the new and latest and greatest things. So what we want to try to do is apply for some of those grants that are out there to help us in assisting in getting more technology into the buildings, even getting technology for the outdoors. We are researching grant sites and also collaborating with other school districts to see what they're applying for or to work together and come up with something for the individual schools. We are looking at other districts that may have been successful in applying for a specific grant. And if that grant is still available, working with them to get something approved or pushed out so that we can also apply for the same. So we would like to at least get one of these grants during this 2021 school year. And that, that is a major goal for the department and for myself. I really want to learn how to do these grants to kind of help with the department so that we can get more of the the latest and greatest and be a showcase for the state. And another thing, going along with the customer service side, reworking the technology side of our school website to be more welcoming and helpful to families. There are a lot of times when you go on to websites and you see stuff all over the place. So what we want to do is kind of reduce the stress of our staff and our families with more helpful documentation and resources on the technology side of our website. We'd like to put together some kind of a district landing page for new hires so that there's different wood softwares we use and how to use them, some walkthrough documentation. So someone that starts new here, they're not just getting thrown right into it, that they have something to back them up and help them out. What we wanted to also do is, we had done this back two years ago, is do a survey for not only the families, but for the staff members as well, to give us feedback on how we're doing. And I believe last, the last time we had done this, we were looking for an 85% positivity rate. We want to go to a 90% or better positivity rate with our families. Hopefully, we can get to like 100%, 9900. That's really what the goal would be. So as long as we're providing that superior customer support as, as well as myself and making the documentation easy on the site, hopefully we can get that positive feedback. And we'd like to have all this up and done by before the fourth quarter of the school year starts, so by about April 2021. And that is what I have here. And I will let you ask any questions you have.
Great. Thank you, David.
Thank you.
I'm going to open up the Florida questions on Mrs. Palish.
Dave, what, so, and, and I don't know the answer to this. Are there a lot of grants out there? Is that?
You know, different companies used to offer, like Apple used to offer their own grant, but they don't anymore. But so there are a lot of different opportunities out there. For example, like Intel offers different grants to buy certain products from them where they can help out some of the schools. So what's happened is recently the tech directors and a lot of the communities are meeting on Thursdays. And it's something that we're bringing to the table to try our best because not only in Tiverton, everybody is suffering with these, with these budget cuts and everything. So we're trying, you know, we're trying to figure out the best way that we can get money for the districts by applying for these grants. Some of them are very small, like, you know, $200, $300, but anything will help.
Anything helps. Yeah, I know. That's great. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Farnworth?
David, thank you for your presentation. One question. Well, as you were speaking, a couple of questions came to mind, but I think you pretty much answered them. The website.
Yes.
I still feel that for mobile devices, it could be better.
Okay.
Is that part of the scope of what you are?
We can, we can make it part of the scope. Absolutely. I can work with Mrs. Delcourt as well in, in regards to making it a little bit more mobile-friendly. One of the benefits of using the, the program that we do currently have for the site is that you can view what it looks like on a tablet as well as a phone while you're designing the pages. So maybe we just want to concentrate more on what it would look like on a phone while we're designing it out.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Palish or Mrs. Pavo?
I have nothing. Thank you.
Mrs. Black?
Ellie?
Yes.
Questions for Mr. Conavalley?
Yes, thank you. David, Mr. Conavalley, thank you very much for that presentation. And technology is more important than ever now with all the things we're going through with the COVID and the support from the, to the parents and the students is greatly appreciated. And it's a great idea about the grants. Let's call all those big guys up and ask them to help us now. Thank you.
Okay. Dave, I have sort of a similar question to my last question for Amy. So what proactive things have we done to make sure that our system is secure with regard to student records and employee records and kind of all of our data?
So Dr. Locken, one of the major things that we, we are doing in the department is to make sure that all of our information is taken out of the school and put into the cloud so that it is safer. We do run daily and nightly backups to two different locations. One is a hotspot location here at the middle school and at the high school. And we also have a location in Providence that we send all of our information to for storage, just in case during a backup, if there is a catastrophe at the school. The benefit is, is that they are run not at the same times. So if something was to happen, we can cut the, the ties between here and Providence so that Providence doesn't get affected by anything that would happen in the schools. All of our student records are stored in the SIS program itself. And that is, that is cloud storage there, as well as a lot of our employee information, which is done with the, the payroll company as well as the attendance software company that we use. A lot of the information, kind of getting it out of the local storage and more into the cloud is, is, is the better way for us. And we are also working with our virus protection program. And we're moving a lot of that information that we store into the cloud so that the computers, when they're taken home, are protected, they're already protected, but they get a little bit more. So if something happens, say we do go on a distance learning and the computers are all at, at someone's house, they're going to get constant upgrades and not have to be on campus for an upgrade. So that's another thing that we are working on through the department here as well to protect everything that we have.
Okay. And did you say you back up the data on a daily basis or a nightly basis?
Yes. So our, our current data, every morning we push out information to the middle school. Usually about 6:00 AM, we run a process that sends everything to a, like a clone type server that we have over there. So that everything that we currently have at 6:00 AM on, say, this morning is backed up at the middle school. And then we do the same thing nightly and we send that over to, to, to Providence is where we have a backup system there as well.
And are those, in particular, the, the Providence one, I, I'm guessing that if we were compromised, the middle school storage would be compromised as well.
That is correct, yes.
You said you could, you know, cut the connection with Providence, but by the time we knew about it, that would already be too late potentially, or is?
If it happens during the day, no. But if it happened to, like 11:00 PM at night, that's when we would have to, to be a little bit concerned with it.
So Providence remains vulnerable if we were attacked?
And, and that's if our virus protections didn't grab it, our ransomware detections didn't grab it.
Okay. And do we do education with staff, not to mention students, about, you know, recognizing sort of malware or phishing or other types of thing, you know, sort of emails you should not open?
Yeah. So, so the benefit of October is it's cybersecurity month. So weekly I send out an email to all the staff. And actually, last week, we sent out an email stating, you know, be careful what you open. Don't give out your password. Don't, if you're unsure, send it to us. We'll look at it. We'll run the scans on it. We'll make sure that it doesn't, you know, affect anything. The other benefit is, is more than 90% of the stuff, the systems that we use out here are Chrome devices. Those Chrome devices really don't have storage on them. And it's very difficult for those to infect a Windows-based machine, which is great. They still do require a ransomware and a virus protection software on there. But that is something that we, we do try to let the staff know about. And we also are teamed up with the MS Isaac and the Homeland Security. So anytime something raises a red flag with, with Homeland, an email stream comes out to us to let us know, hey, look out for this. This is an email that you may want to be concerned about. And what we can do is we actually can put blockers in our Gmail account at the admin level and block specific emails from even getting delivered to us. So when we do get a message from the MS Isaac saying be on the lookout for this specific email address sending this subject line, we take that, we add that into our Google Admin Council and it actually will block the email from being delivered.
And can you explain what an MSI exec is for everybody else?
So the MS Isaac is a, is a group, a coalition of different companies that work hand in hand with Homeland Security to protect the, the infrastructures for the, for government agencies. And it's a group of people, the state police pretty much run the one for Rhode Island. And they're, they basically educate and help protect this, the government agency, like schools, municipalities from any kinds of software attack. So if something were to happen, the state police would come in as well as MS Isaac and Homeland Security to come in and help us recover and kind of catch who did whatever they did and how it was happening.
Okay, thank you. And do you have a way of?
We're getting a little bit off track on the goals. It was all great, but.
Well, I think, I think it does inform sort of you know, what, what the goals are.
How so? I'm gonna, I'm gonna agree with Diane on this one.
Okay. All right. Well, I have one more question I'm gonna ask.
Go ahead.
Do we have a way of knowing if our system has been sort of probed, but we were able to, you know, not be attacked in some way?
Yes, we do. So the program that we currently use for our ransomware and virus detection will send an email off to the technology team, letting us know of a potential attack or a potential anything, where it was captured, how it was captured. A lot of the times, it's the, it's the, the old stuff that, you know, is still floating out there. But that's pretty much, we do get alerted of anytime something does try to hit us or try to, what they call a pen attack on, on the IP range and stuff.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
I guess my justification for asking these questions is because I wanted to make sure that these did not need to be a goal. So.
Thank you.
I will turn back the floor to Ms. Dr. Senkione.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And if you're on the agenda, we have Ms. Delcourt listed next. However, Ms. Delcourt could not, could not be with us this evening. She had a previous commitment. So with that being said, we're going to go to Ms. Amy Donnelly-Roch. You may recall when the principals presented, she had a previous engagement, couldn't join us, but she is pleased to present the Fort Barton goals to everyone.
Okay, great. Thank you. Thanks, Amy. How about it?
Thank you.
To stay on the agenda.
Don't be fresh.
So as you know, the district has several goals that are shared among our three elementarys. And I want to present to you the Fort Barton School Improvement Plan, which does include those three goals. This is a review, so I'll go quickly. There is one that you all discussed at your last meeting with Ms. Mordell and Mr. Cabral in terms of writing and developing common grade level assignments and assessments that are aligned to how and what we teach. Additionally, there is a district-wide goal regarding being able to pivot between the ways we teach and making sure that our teachers are skilled at developing instructional strategies that go along with the professional learning they're engaged in this year. In terms of the way we teach, you know that we have a lot of students in person, thank goodness. And several are participating virtually and we are continuing to work on being ready should we ever need to have everyone working remotely. And that remains a goal as well. The Fort Barton School Improvement Team has lots of things we're working on from our faculty, staff and families. At this time, we chose to elevate two additional goals beyond the district-wide elementary goals. One related to math instruction and ensuring that our students get the personalized support and enrichment that they need to recoup from time not in school during the pandemic and continue to move forward and make strong growth. The other goal is really based on leveraging the district's new screening tool, which was one of my goals last year, for social emotional learning and leveraging that to expand the instructional supports we will have in place for all of the learners. And so at Fort Barton, we've agreed that that will include refining the existing positive behavioral expectations we have for our students, doing that through faculty surveys as well as student input. And a committee led by educators on social emotional learning. As implementing morning meeting as an instructional tool so that we are using the results of that screening and the national, which are based on the national standards for social emotional learning to really increase our own skills as faculty in terms of how we model and support students' appropriate behavior and also ensuring the students' growth so that we all really understand and see that social emotional learning is not another thing, but it is the foundation of everything that we do. And we know that learning is social and so social emotional learning is key to our continued growth. I'll open it up to any questions.
Okay, thank you, Amy. I'm gonna open it to the committee. Mrs. Black. We may have lost Mr. Stacks, I can't hear you. Peter, can you see if Sally has any questions? Sally? Peter, you're muted.
Hello?
Yep. Go ahead, Sally.
Mrs. Black, if you would, for the committee, is it possible for you to repeat your comments?
Oh, they didn't hear me?
They did not. I apologize.
Okay. So I was just saying thank you to Amy for including that social emotional piece in there. It's so important and I'm sure she'll fit the health and wellness in with it. And I will continue to be a member of that health and wellness committee. So I'll be seeing you. And thank you for all that work at Fort Barton.
My pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, Sally. Mrs. Pavo?
I have no questions.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Just one clarification question, Amy. On the, the math goal, your strategy is to teach Eureka Math daily with fidelity. And it says, your evidence of effectiveness is full implementation of the curriculum. Am I reading it wrong? Because I think we've been teaching Eureka for a number of years. So can you help me understand what it is you're saying with that?
There are still areas in which I think we can teach some of the strategies. And we talked about this as a school improvement team, some of the strategies in terms of instructional approaches that are mentioned within and encouraged within our Eureka Math program. It's certainly not a new program, but there are multiple instructional strategies. And there are also recommended instructional strategies that allow you to personalize or enrich and expand the ways in which kids are learning. And so really diving deeply into all of the math practices and making sure that all of our students are educated in the ways that best meet their personal learning styles and learning strengths was the intent of the goal.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Palish?
Thanks for the presentation, Amy. Just a quick question, your technology education evaluations, is that evaluations of the tech or of the classroom teachers? For evidence of effectiveness?
Implementation.
Okay.
Thank you. Yes, that's one of our district. I apologize. It says my internet connection is unstable. I hope you can hear me.
Yes, I can.
That is one of our district-wide goals and we did intend to include professional growth in the instructional strategies and do plan to evaluate our teachers on their use of those strategies that are learned through our professional development.
And as a very linear thinker, I appreciate the smart goals. So thank you for that.
Okay.
Of course.
Okay, I'm gonna open up the floor to any of our administrators for actually any of the presentations that we've had this evening. Is any questions from any of our principals or administrators? You all look fabulous. Okay. And Mr. Connavally, any questions from the public?
No, sir.
Okay, great. Well, thank you to all of you for your well-thought-out goals and plans. The only direction is up.
Yeah, thanks, everyone. It's very, it's, it's really, I mean, I know this is something that was sort of instituted under Peter and it's, it's very, it's, it's enlightening for us. It's appreciated. We get to know you better. It's, it's really a, a nice, nice thing to share with us and to share with our public. It's very much appreciated.
Yes. Okay, great. So we are on item seven E, career and technical education pathways to success. I believe Mrs. Black wanted to speak with us about this. Sally? The floor is yours.
Sally, we're on item E, career and technical education.
Okay. So as you know, I always bring this up. We work very hard on this as a state. So I just want to make sure that when I'm not here, we, we continue for the current technical education pathways to success. And also not just those, but all the other pathways, which are the arts, humanities and real language, public service, teaching and STEM. So you all know about it and I just wanted to put this on here for tonight because 2021 is the first year where a student can use this to graduate. And that will improve our graduation rate immensely because if they can't reach it by a cut score, they can turn to this. And it's very intense. It's very meaningful. And I'm, I'm very excited that Tiverton High School is a comprehensive public high school that we always say includes every student that comes through the door with a way to come out and be successful in the world. And so I just want to make sure, please, when I leave that you will keep a hold of this and developing it. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Sally. Any questions or discussion from the rest of the committee at this time? Mrs. Palish?
I'm sorry, I was using the restroom. What was the question?
So I, you know, Sally had just talked about how, you know, we have the pathways and some of these can be alternative means for satisfying graduation requirements as well as kind of helping students differentiate their career goals and educational aspirations during the course of their high school career. And I would just open up the floor to any questions or conversation or discussion from the rest of the committee. So.
So I guess, like Sally, you know, it's, it's, it's great that we have these and it's, it's a way to market the the high school and, and Tiverton. How does this work? And I guess this is probably a question for Chris. How do these work with scheduling? Do we? Like, I don't know if we have a lot of people from the outside, but if people internally, do we sort of schedule these first or how, what do we do with these? Because I can't imagine there's a lot of people in them. Maybe there is, which is a good thing.
Yeah, so thanks, Deb. And I just, I, if I'm understanding your question correctly, if, kind of like, how do we make sure that kids can get these courses?
Yes.
Want, is that?
Exactly.
Yeah, right. Yeah. So yeah, scheduling is a, definitely a long-term process. It actually, we spend about second half, most of the second semester scheduling. And one of the pieces that we start with, and I guess the short answer is we are able to ensure that all of the kids that want the CTE courses get them because we start with the students first. So we start with the students' requests. You know, so students start with their counselors and we're in communication with their parents. And if this is something they're interested in, we encourage that. And then we make sure that that's a priority for that student. So that it gets in their schedule, so that then later on in the school year, in terms of planning for the following year, if another elective or something else comes up where there's a potential conflict, we're able to anticipate that and plan accordingly.
Great, thanks.
Yeah, sorry. Can you repeat, repeat that?
Yes, thank you.
Oh, okay. Sorry. Yeah.
If I may, in terms of numbers, I'm just. Pardon me, just briefly.
Are you still on?
Um.
They can hear you from mine.
In terms of numbers, last school year, the high school had thirty students participate in the engineering courses. And in our construction and carpentry program, I'm adding in my head, pardon me, there were thirty-two students who participated in that pathway. And then our new pathway of computer science had about sixty students participating. So we definitely have a lot of students participating. The goal is that they each actually complete those pathways. And Chris and his team are doing a great job increasing enrollment there.
Good. Thank you, Amy.
Thanks. All right. So Mrs. Pavo?
I have no questions on that. My question was more of a scheduling question, so I'll pass.
Okay. Mrs. Farnworth?
I have no questions.
And Mrs. Black?
No, thank you.
I guess. And any questions from the public, Dave?
No, sir.
Any, any other questions for our administrators? Okay, again, thank you for bringing this to us, Mrs. Black. We are on item seven F. Sally, you're up again. Growth is the town.
Yes, this was a Tiverton Joint Town Council and Planning Board workshop. And it was about developmental pressure. And it was October 8th, 2020. I, I, I watched it and then I called the planner the next day and asked her if she would please send this to us because we've always been following this. The development is very important, our growth is, so that we can chart it and prepare ourselves for it. And that's the only reason I had it sent to everybody. And, you know, we'll always keep our eye on this and it's, it's ever-changing as we know. But we'll just, I just wanted to share this with, with the committee. Thank you.
Okay, thank you again. So I'm gonna open it up to any discussion from the committee. Mrs. Pavo?
No, no, Jen. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Farnworth?
Just to say that I had watched that particular meeting as well. Sorry, I'm losing my, my Zoom here. It's definitely an interesting subject. And the takeaway from it that I got was that the current Town Council wanted to be sure that they got their message out with their concerns over potential population growth. And certainly, coming from the perspective of the school committee, we always have to be aware of that potential. But certainly, I, I think as far as the schools are concerned right now, we do have some room for growth. And we'll just have to keep our ear to the ground and watch how things go.
That's right. Thank you.
Hey. Deb, did I call on you?
No, but I'm all set. Thank you.
Okay. All right. And yeah, I don't, I don't have any other, I don't have any questions myself. I guess I, a similar take to Diane. It is hard to know, I guess, what to make of anything yet, you know, until they've actually come up with more concrete plans. If, if there is a push to, to do a lot of other development, particularly residential development. All right. And any questions from the public, Mr. Connavally, or from our administrators? Okay, I think we are up to item seven G. I don't know if we're tabling that, Peter, if Julie's not here?
Correct. We'll put that on the next agenda.
Okay, all right. And then we're up to item seven H, request approval for National Junior Honor Society Club. Mrs. Craven?
Hi, thank you, Dr. Locken. So I'm present tonight to request approval for a Tiverton Middle School chapter of the National Junior Honor Society. Sherry Als has volunteered to be the chapter advisor and she is also in attendance to answer any questions that you may have about our request. I did, in July of 2019, come before the committee and I had put the recommendation in our student handbook. So my apologies for not, not making a formal request to you at that time. Because I wasn't, we are aware of the process, but I am here today to request that approval.
Okay, I'm gonna ask for a motion to approve?
Motion to approve?
Second, Sally.
Okay, I'm gonna open it up to questions from the committee. Mrs. Farnworth?
Mrs. Craven, well, first of all, I think it's a great idea. Anything that we can do to encourage our students to strive for high places is always a great thing. And I thank you and I thank Mrs. Als as well for spearheading this. I know you, you mentioned it's in the middle school handbook. Could you point that out to me where it is? Because I don't see it specifically called out in the table of contents and I'm having a hard time.
Yeah, I can, I have to, I have to pull up the handbook if you give me a minute and I can get that for you as a reference.
I know it's under procedures and it may be about page twenty-eight.
There you go. Thank you, Mrs. Al.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Do you want me to go to somebody else? Diane, while you look at that?
Yes, please.
Okay. Mrs. Pavo?
Mrs. Als, did you say page twenty-one?
I said page twenty-eight and that was.
Okay, okay. I'll look at that in a minute, but because it does say that you have to have your application in by September twentieth or thereabouts, this would happen next, begin next, next September, correct?
So no, this has already started our 2020 application process.
Okay.
Via the mailing system. This was already in the works. Students. At the end of the school year and then we extended the date due to the pandemic.
Oh, okay. All right. Thank you.
So, you know, maybe actually before we go to questions, either Ms. Als or Ms. Craven, you could sort of gloss the. either Ms. Als or Ms. Craven, you could sort of gloss the process for us a little bit. Can you walk us through exactly kind of, I guess, the overarching idea and then kind of what the process was or is? That would probably be helpful for the public as well.
Certainly, I can start and then I'll have Ms. Als. She's done an incredible amount of work on this to get it up and running. Ms. Als with a team of five other middle school teachers. So at the end of last year, we sent invitations. We start with the GPA three-point-six GPA. And all students who have achieved that, grades six, seven, or eight, are invited. So at the end of last year, we had fifty-six seventh graders and thirty-two sixth graders who received invitations to apply to the National Junior Honor Society. Normally, we would have had the induction ceremony last spring, but because of COVID, we obviously didn't. We're not successful, so we put it off until this fall. Of those that were invited, thirty students applied. And I believe it was twenty-five that were chosen to be inducted in the first middle school ceremony scheduled for November fourth.
Okay, and that's between the seventh and the sixth graders?
Correct.
So the total number is, total N is twenty-five?
Correct.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna correct that. It's twenty-two.
Twenty-two, thank you.
You're welcome.
Wow, the honor is declining. All right. Sorry, it was a bad joke. All right, I'm gonna now go back to Mrs. Farnworth. You ready for questions or?
Um. No, actually, this is, the reading on this is very good. And I do, it was on page twenty-nine in the handbook, as an FYI for everyone. And, no, I just, congratulations and thank you for putting the work into this. I think, again, it's an opportunity for our younger students to start to aspire to a high level of performance where it comes to their academics and leadership, et cetera. And, you know, just get some ready for bigger and better things as they move up to the high school.
Thank you, we are looking forward to it. We're looking forward to the induction and we sent out invitations to all of you. And we hope you can be there. Dr. Santoni will be our guest speaker that evening as well, so we appreciate your attendance.
The fourth, right?
Correct.
Right. Mrs. Pavo, questions?
No, that was the only question I had, thank you.
Okay. Mrs. Black?
Yes, congratulations on doing, when you first brought it, I was very happy. And so it's leadership, spouse, character service. Is there also civics on there? Did I see another one? Did it say civics?
It's scholarship, leadership, service, and a character, so co-curricular activities, yes.
Right, yeah, okay, all right, good. No, that's wonderful. I'm glad you're doing that. As they all said, it really, really is an honor to be looked at for that and to strive towards that for the younger ones. Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Falsh?
So, and you weren't the only one that was confused, Sue. I thought we had already approved it, so.
Oh, thank you. I did, it's okay.
Because I remember talking about it when we did the handbook. So are the requirements, either Sherry or Sue, are those pretty standard sort of, you know, across the US? Do you sort of pull those?
Yeah, I'll let Sherry answer that because she is the chapter advisor. And she has done a considerable amount of research on those standards to make sure we were in line with middle schools across the nation. So, Sherry?
Yes, we did exactly that. The National Junior Honor Society has a very reliable website with a variety of standards that we must uphold. And then they also give us some flexibility within our own school system, district, et cetera.
And is this independent, completely independent from like the high school? So when they get up to the high school, they have to meet those requirements separately?
So I haven't looked into that piece, but this is the brother of the National Honor Society at the high school. So yes and no, but I don't know how it transfers.
Yeah, judging by my knowledge of middle school and high school honor societies, it really doesn't transfer. So they would have to fulfill the requirements at the high school level.
Except that it does get them excited and interested in it before they get there. I mean, much like many of the things we do at the middle school, we want them to, you know, get excited about things that are going on at the high school as well. So congratulations. And for anyone that didn't hear, November fourth, I'm assuming that's available for anyone to watch?
Yes, that's the evening of the induction, so thank you.
Okay, quick question, couple of quick questions. So you said the first cut was to have a three-point-six GPA. How does that, how does that actually translate? Because we get sort of these numeric grades that are eighty-eight or ninety-five or seventy-two or whatever.
Yeah, so we were able to pull that data right from Aspen. I had Ally, Aspen does have a way to take their grades and calculate it to a GPA.
Okay. And then was there any impact from, so if it was the end of last year, clearly the part of the third and the fourth quarter were all on distance learning. Could you discern an impact or was there, I'm trying to remember exactly, thought the issue was you were not supposed to go lower than your second quarter grade? Or is that how it worked? If you could remind me?
For grades for last year? No, you could go lower, but it was, nobody was going to fail. And if it was a considerable drop, then certainly we were going to look at that and take that into consideration if they were, just for equity reasons. But we did have certain kids go, you know, a few points lower, without a doubt.
Okay, all right, good. All right, any other questions from the committee or from our administrators? And any questions from the public, Mr. Carnavale?
No, sir. Hold on one second. We do have some families that are saying that they're very excited for the program. But no real questions and they're just thanking the middle school for having this program to life.
Okay, great. Yes, again, thank you very much. Mrs. Als, Miss Craven, and the people that worked with you on it. So I'm gonna ask for a vote. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Black?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Mrs. Falsh?
Yes.
I vote yes. Okay, again, thank you very much, ladies. And that brings us to item eight, Announcement Scheduled Meetings Reports. So right now, we are scheduled to meet for our regularly scheduled meetings on November tenth and the twenty-fourth. The twenty-fourth is the Tuesday before Thanksgiving, if I have my calendar right. The tenth would typically be the first meeting after the election. And we would swear in the new committee, whoever happens to be on it, you never know. I suppose it might make more sense to move that meeting to the seventeenth and just meet once in November. I'll open to discussion. Well, I guess I should ask Peter first. Would that be a reasonable approach? Do we have stuff we have to address in November where you could get away with one meeting or not get away with one meeting?
No, absolutely could get away with one meeting. There's nothing that I see as pressing right now.
Okay. Any discussion or comments from the committee? If we reschedule our meeting from the tenth to the seventeenth and not meet on the twenty-fourth, I'll turn to Mrs. Pavo first.
I have no problem with that, just hope we don't get caught up in still having two meetings closer, you know, closer together if we do a seventeenth.
Yep.
And find that we need another one and we go to the date of the twenty-fourth. I'm hoping that doesn't happen, two weeks in a row.
Yeah, I don't know of any deadlines.
I mean, it's not predictable, you can't.
Yeah.
What will happen, but I don't have a problem with the seventeenth.
I'm pretty sure nobody in town could accuse us of not having enough meetings.
Oh, no, I don't think that could be a possibility.
Deb, any thoughts, concerns?
No, I agree with Elaine. If we can get, if we can do one and not, you know, run into Thanksgiving week and not run into not having the election certified, I think that's the best move.
Okay, Diane?
I agree wholeheartedly.
Okay, Sally, I'll let you talk anyway if you want.
Can I talk on the announcements, please?
Sorry?
During the announcements, please, I'll talk, okay?
Okay, I think we sort of are on announcements, aren't we? So we will plan on meeting the seventeenth. Anything else from anybody under Announcement Scheduled Meetings Reports? Sally, I'll recognize you.
Yes, thank you, Derek. Okay, I just want to thank everyone, especially for tonight. It was such an honor to serve the town. And can you hear me, Dr. Santoni?
Yes, everyone can hear.
Okay, so I just wanted to thank everyone again for the flowers and for that honor tonight and all the staff. And I especially want to recognize Mr. Murray and his athletic crew that have put together all those amazing games and movies and slides. And it's been a work of art to see that go along smoothly. And thank you, everyone, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna miss doing this. Thank you so much.
Okay, well, again, thank you, Sally. So I'm gonna ask for a motion to move into executive session under Rhode Island General Law forty-two, forty-six, five, A, one, Job Performance Character Mental Physical Superintendent Evaluation.
So move.
I take that motion.
I'll second.
Okay, I'm gonna do a roll call vote. Mrs. Pavo?
Yes.
Mrs. Farnworth?
Yes.
Falsh?
Yes.
Mrs. Black? Sally?
Apparently she's done.
Peter, are you there?
Oh, I don't see him either. His green went black. There he is.
All right, Sally, we need your vote to move into executive?
Yes.
Okay, and I vote yes, so we're in executive session five to zero.